Guidelines, withholding our Board of Education meeting virtually tonight. To aid in streamlining this meeting, we will not be having our public legions inspirational moment, light missions or student speakers this evening. We are all looking forward to having these items presented in the near future. Andrew, will you please take the roll call?
William Baumgart. Corey Montiel.
Here.
Greg Dietz.
Here.
Amanda Roddy. Diane Boy.
Here.
Patrick McCaffery.
Here.
Kurt O'Brien.
Here.
Karen Reinacek. Joseph Como.
Here. And Sue, will you please verify that the meeting's been properly posted?
Yes, it has.
Thank you. And thank you for hosting this meeting tonight. Your first meeting that you're hosting.
Yes, I'm excited.
That excitement continues throughout tonight, Sue. We're going to move into the section of our meeting where we listen to our citizens speak. As has been past practice, each individual will be limited to three minutes to speak. At the two and a half minute mark, Sue will let you know to wrap up your comments in the next 30 seconds. Expect all speakers to honor the time limit, refrain from using any inappropriate language manner and be respectful in their comments. Speakers who do not meet these expectations may be prohibited from speaking at future Board of Education meetings. Sue will unmute your microphone when it's your turn to speak. And we ask that when it is your turn to speak to provide your name and address. And Sue, do we have anyone signed up to addresses tonight?
Yes, we do. We have one person I know for sure wants to speak, Paul Reese, and we have a few people that joined later. So I will ask them after Paul is done if they would care to speak or not. Okay, all right. Paul, you are unmuted. Please begin your three minutes.
Paul Reese, 505 Rawlings Drive, Waukesha, Wisconsin. I am speaking tonight. I'm, I for one am disappointed in the school board's decision to meet via webcam. I don't understand why we couldn't have a regular school board meeting in a place like an auditorium or a gymnasium. Nobody's using them right now, and there is plenty of room in one of those places. Spread out. Spread out. The legislation challenge. And now I hear everybody else talking in the background. It's still distracting, distracting. Today, the legislature met in the Capitol and we had to open up the building to allow people in because it has to be open. This is governmental body. It is central business and it. I am really getting a lot of feedback here. And there's, I don't see any reason why this could have been done in a school board, in a regular school board meeting in one of our gymnasiums. Anyways, I'm upset about that. The only thing I was wondering about. I know everybody I know is getting pulled and laid off to work, and yet public sector employees seem to be immune to this. I think the only ones that the office was doing, and imagine this, they're laying off the least in their group. The teachers' ages are most likely to be laying off. What did the janitors do in there? Now it's been empty buildings. Why aren't they being laid off? And why are, I mean, we're here over the winter time and winter time, gym teachers were complaining about not having enough prep time anymore. So why aren't they getting their hours cut and laid off? I think the sense of urgency amongst all people ends with. I haven't. I don't want to see anyone lose their job. I don't want to see anyone get laid off or anything. It's just the sense. Some is greater than other. My name. He's been off. Ninety years and now no longer has a job. And who knows when he's going back to work? Sense of urgency than people who are collecting paycheck. You know, if you're on a sinking boat and you're on a boat that is sailing fine. The notion that some people are protected for nothing is just, I find. I'm probably talking about three minutes, so thanks.
Thank you, Paul.
Sue, is there anyone else that would like to address the board?
I will. Kelly, do you want to speak to the board tonight? Gerald, did you want to speak to the board tonight? Okay, I guess not.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Appreciate that. Moving on to our minute approval, we have several minutes for approval tonight. On March 11th, we had a regular board meeting. On March 11th, we also had an executive session. March 16th, we had a special board meeting that was an executive session. Now, March 26th, we had a special board meeting. Do I have a motion for a minute approval?
I'll move, Bill. This is Bill speaking. I'll move for approval.
Okay, moved by Bill. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Corey. Any discussion, any changes that we need to make to the minutes? Okay, seeing none. Sue, will you please take the roll call vote?
Corey Montiel.
Hi.
William Baumgart. Patrick McCaffery.
Hi.
Karen Reinacek.
Karen, we didn't hear you. Will you unmute? Karen, we didn't hear you. Do you unmute?
Karen. Karen, you should be unmuted now. Thank you. Kurt O'Brien.
Hi.
Amanda Roddy.
Hi.
Greg Dietz.
Hi.
Diane Boy.
Hi.
Joseph Como.
Hi. This is nine zero, Sue. Thank you. Moving on to our communications portion of our meeting, Todd, do you receive any communications you'd like to report on?
Yes, I do. First one is from the Kerry Harris, the Fire Prevention Bureau of the Waukesha Fire Department, thanking us for the use of our thermometers during the COVID-19 issue. They're saying that the extra supplies help with patient evaluations during this time of great need. My second letter is from Dave Sternig, Commissioner of the Classic Eight Conference. He's congratulating Waukesha South High School for being recipient of Classic Eight Sportsmanship Award for Girls Basketball and Wrestling. The third letter also from Dave Sternig congratulating Waukesha West High School for being recipient of Classic Eight Conference Sportsmanship Award for Boys Basketball and Girls Basketball. And finally, letter number four also from Mr. Sternig congratulating Waukesha North for being recipient of Classic Eight Conference Sportsmanship Award for Girls Basketball and Boys Swimming and Diving. That's it.
Thank you, Todd, for that report. It's always good to hear how many good sports, sportsmen and women we have in our district. I enjoy those letters from Dave very much. Diane, do you happen to have a Waukesha Education Foundation report for us tonight?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. President. COVID-19 has definitely impacted WEF during the past month along with everybody else. The WEF Board met virtually on April 2nd. Enthusiasm for accepting the challenge from Gieracevsky and planning for many of you to join Todd's tortoise team for the May 9th WEF Wellness Walk and Wellness Fair. The event has had to be canceled for 2020. Thank you to all the early registrants who have kindly allowed their registration fees to become donations to WEF. The save the date has gone out for the August 4th WEF golf outing. Hopefully, this event will be able to get people out on the golf course in August to support the Waukesha Education Foundation. In preparation for the 2020 Evening for Education to be held at the Marriott Hotel on October 29th, nominations for the three annual Waukesha Education Foundation Awards are being prepared. The WEF Corporate Partner, the WEF Community Partner, and the Sally Jo Machelko Lifetime Excellence in Education Awards. The nomination forms are available on the WEF website and will be due on May 11th. With all the challenges of online learning, the WEF grant application due date was extended to this past weekend. And our current, currently, our review committee is reviewing the many applications online to determine this year's WEF grant recipients. Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Diane. Appreciate that. Moving on to our charter school and program report by Bill Baumgart.
I have nothing to report.
Thank you, Bill. Roll into our consent agenda. This month, there were no gifts received. As usual, though, we do have an agenda that includes various categories for your approval. There were no expenses for this month. So at this time, I would ask if there are any items that someone would like to side for super consideration. Okay. Please present the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Como. Earlier this evening, the Human Resources and Compensation Committee approved of six resignations, 871 full-time teacher contracts, and one is pending board approval of retirement retraction. Please note that we had two retirement retraction requests. One has been rescinded by the teacher. Committee has approved three job shares and one part-time contract. She was provided in your packet and addendum was emailed to you today. I moved that the consent agenda to be approved as amended.
Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Ryan Check. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none. Sue, will you please roll call vote?
Greg Dietz.
Hi.
Karen Reinacek. Corey Montiel.
Hi.
Patrick McCaffery.
Hi.
Diane Boy.
Hi.
William Baumgart. Kurt O'Brien.
Hi.
Amanda Roddy. Joseph Como.
Hi. This is nine zero, Sue. Thank you. Moving on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Gray?
Okay, I'm going to, for the first part of this, I'm going to. He wanted to give an update on the virtual learning with the special ed department. Apparently, there wasn't enough time last night to do that, so I'm going to defer to Joe and he can give a quick update.
Thank you, Dr. Gray. So in the last, over the course of the last month, the Special Ed and Student Services Department has been working to ensure that we, to the best of our ability, carry out special education to students with disabilities. Our teachers are working through the platforms that our general ed teachers are using, Blackboard 9, WebEx, and Google Classroom to implement instruction for students. At the elementary and at the secondary level, there's been a great deal of collaboration between staff to ensure that services can be delivered to the greatest extent possible. You have really worked with our staff to emphasize communication with families, to do so by phone, to do so by email, text message, whatever the best format is to connect with students and parents. We've been working to try to accomplish that. In instances where we haven't been able to accomplish that, we have activated our social workers and our administrators to assist us in ensuring that we can continue to deliver a high-quality instructional program to students during this shutdown period. For our student services staff, our social workers have really been working on making that connection with families and as well as getting them connected to services in the community, making sure that in the absence of some of the things that we do at school, our families do have a bridge to community resources to help them, such as, you know, areas of food and wellness. We have had our student services staff, our psychologists, social workers, and psychologists have been working to help students who have been struggling socially and emotionally at home and in the school environment, so doing regular check-ins with them. Our counselors are also spending a great deal of time making sure that our scheduling at the secondary level is done and that students are ready to go forward into a schedule for next year. In addition to that, we've been spending a lot of time working on, working with our students who have been at risk of not graduating, making sure that our at-risk programming is in place, that we're able to stay connected to our students and help them with credit recovery and working towards a high school diploma. Our East staff has, you know, been working similarly to our traditional high school staff in connecting with kids and facilitating learning and going that extra mile to make sure that they have the resources that they need. We do have a couple of areas where, you know, our services have become pretty unique for occupational and physical therapists. It's really taken on a consultation role with parents and with teachers. Our speech and language pathologists are following a tele-speech model, working to make sure that services are provided and that contact is made with students and families. Our teachers of the deaf and hard of hearing and visual impairments have really been working extra hard to ensure that kids have access to the curriculum at hand and working with the families to make sure that they have a medium to make sure that those kids can access their education. And that was kind of a brief overview as to what we are doing. I'd like to thank our staff. The volume of collaboration that has existed recently between general educators and special educators and special educators and families has been tremendous. We've spent a deal of time. The administrators have spent a great deal of time in contact with the teachers, meeting weekly, to make sure that there is that connection, that there are resources. My administrative team has spent a great deal of time in meetings with southeastern Wisconsin Special Ed administrators as well as individuals from the DPI and our local CISA to make sure that we're staying on top of and ahead of any changes that are coming from the state and federal level for guidance as it pertains to serving students with disabilities. So that's a brief overview, and I'm certainly here for any questions that may come in.
Just to extend it too much longer, but you know, I think our staff overall have done a wonderful job with this. I talked to many parents in my neighborhood. They're, you know, obviously it's like their kids to be back at school, but overall, I think they're very satisfied with the work we're doing. I also have a number of teachers in my neighborhood who have said, you know, it's not just a couple hours. It's all day thing because kids come in and do their work at different times during the day. So they're answering questions literally from morning till evening. So, you know, a huge thanks to our staff for pulling us through this. We are, we do continually look for issues to try to solve those. Sharon Thede and I met with the leadership of the AW a week ago and ironed out some issues, and I think we're there. But we'll continue to do that. I made that offer to that particular group, and they've been pretty good about getting issues to me. And I think we've been pretty good about solving them too. So we're just going to move forward with this, and I am just being totally optimistic that maybe we can get back in early May. I'd love to do that for a number of reasons, but especially for our seniors who will be graduating. That's my report.
Thank you, Todd. Thank you, Joe. Moving on to the part of the meeting where we have the committees report out, and as I've said in the past, that's where most of the heavy duty occurs. We do rotate which committees report first, and this time up adding first is our Finance and Facilities Committee. That's going to begin by Mr. McCaffery.
Thank you, Mr. President. On my report this evening, I have two action items and three discussion items. The first action item is the approval of the 2020-2021 student fees. The committee was presented a recommendation for the student fees for the 2021 school year, which requested no changes in student school or food service fees for the 2021 school year. The committee approved the student fees as presented and I so moved.
Is there a second to that motion?
I second it.
By Diane Boy. Discussion. Questions or any discussion? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
O'Brien.
Hi.
Patrick McCaffery.
Hi.
Greg Dietz.
Hi.
Amanda Roddy.
Hi.
Diane Boy. Corey Montiel.
Hi.
Karen Reinacek. Joseph Como.
Hi. This is nine zero.
Our second action item this evening is the approval of the String Academy contract. Committee discussed the future funding of the String Academy contract. There will be data analysis over the next few months to determine the viability of the contract for the 2021-2022 school year and beyond. The committee approved the 2020- and 2021 String Academy contract, and I so moved.
Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Mrs. Reinacek. Discussion. Commissioner questions? Okay, seeing none. Sue, will you please take the roll call vote?
Amanda Roddy.
Hi.
Diane Boy.
Hi.
Corey Montiel. Kurt O'Brien.
Hi.
Karen Reinacek. Greg Dietz.
Hi.
William Baumgart.
Hi.
Patrick McCaffery.
Hi.
And Joseph Como.
Hi. And I didn't hear all that, but I, all of the eyes, but I thought it was nine zero, Sue. Did you get that? Okay. Thank you. Patrick?
Excellent. Our first discussion item is the 2019-2020 Monthly Budget Report and District Closure Report. The committee was presented the budget report for the month of March. $22,653,407 was reported in the general fund revenue, and $9,165,054 was expended during the month. There was $1,391,792 reported in the special education fund revenue, and $2,366,552 was expended. The committee reviewed some of the key issues related to the district's closure from onsite instruction. This item included federal stimulus legislation, furloughing of teacher aide staff, and ongoing discussion with the district's student transportation advisor. The decision to furlough rather than lay off the aide staff results in health insurance being maintained for those employees that already qualified and the continuation of their accumulated time off. And that is a discussion item if anybody wishes to discuss it. Anybody?
Anybody? Okay, Patrick, I don't see one.
Okay. The second discussion item was the 2020-2021 budget development. As more information on the federal stimulus packages and potential state of Wisconsin budget repair bill become known, the district will continue to make the best possible decisions to navigate through not only the remainder of the school year, but also into 2020 and 2021. The plan to get through all of the unknowns facing us at this time is to conserve as many financial resources in 2019-2020 school year while working to maximize federal stimulus proceeds to be used to offset the 2020-2021 structural and potentially newly legislated budget shortfalls. The additional resources just mentioned will be used to provide flexibility for what is yet to come. As of now, the 2020-2021 budget is being developed based on current legislation, and necessary budget adjustments are being identified, similar to the last few years. And that's the discussion. If anybody has any questions.
Questions, any comments?
Joe?
Yes, Kurt?
Yeah. Pat. Essentially, when you look at the state aid portion of our revenue streams, that state aid is generally used except for category blades, but generally is used to keep property taxes down. It normally doesn't, they normally, other than the normal increases in revenue limits, revenue limits defines how much total revenue you could collect, which is a combination of state aids and property taxes amongst other things. So there would be no this time, there would be no consideration that we'd actually see a reduction in our revenue limit. But I believe it would be more as to what funds the state has available to help school districts across the state.
Right. And that would be.
Go ahead, Pat.
Yeah, in my mind, that would be correct. There was some scenarios put out at the meeting about whether or not it was a status quo with the current legislation or if it was reverted back to a zero increase. So it's, yeah, it's completely up in the air of the state funds coming in, but to offset the local property tax, and I'm glad you mentioned that is because the state funds is what does keep our property taxes as low as we can keep them.
And then the other thing, historically, the back when we had the last economic disruption and state budgets were crushed because they didn't have the income coming in because of the financial collapse, the federal government essentially sent over a significant amount of money that was used to offset school aids. We haven't seen that yet from the federal government, but it's quite possible that if every state has the same problem with revenues, public schools are something that are going to get an early consideration from the federal government as well.
Right, yeah, and I just read some stuff about that. There's actually two pieces to that. There's two different bills. And each bill has a different way of utilizing the money, and the governor actually has the authority on where to place that money. It's open for colleges as well in the second bill.
So when it comes to education, at this point in time, it's too early for people to express major concerns because there's still a lot of things to be ironed out between the state and the federal.
Yeah, I would agree. The knowledge base on what's coming is minimal. Correct. Yep.
Darren or Todd, would you like to comment on on this topic at all?
Just from what we've seen, you know, we, there's a couple of different scenarios out there. I, I, you know, Darren, I have a doc, and we're not going to count a single dollar until we actually see something because who knows how that's going to be done. Some of that money also goes to higher ed. They typically have much bigger budgets and get usually bigger allocation. So until that's all settled, we're just going to assume that, you know, we're not getting any or much additional funding, or we're just going to stay the course until we actually have that money in hand.
Yeah, the one thing I'd add on the federal stimulus, you guys mentioned already, there's more unknowns than knowns. A lot of that money is there to initiate you to continue, and I'll just use the bus company as an example, to continue payments to them beyond what we're contractually obligated to do. So yes, we might get federal stimulus money, but are they driving us to spend it on things that this board may not choose to do? So keep in mind that any governmental money comes with a list of rules and regs and purposes that we'll just have to wait and see.
Yeah, just real quickly, I'm assuming we must have gotten something back from our transportation company, considering that they're not running any buses for those last two months. Is that correct, Darren?
Yeah, well, we're contractually obligated to pay them 50%, well, 50% of the daily rate for 30 calendar days. So whether they're providing services or not, it's you know, what do you do after that point? And there's been pressure by every bus company and the state association, and I would say even some politicians to continue to pay your vendors. And the fallback is what you're going to get the federal dollars to cover it. And just all I'm saying is that some of those federal dollars might be a net zero, depending on what those rules are. Even the unemployment stimulus package is still up in the air. We checked with Senator Johnson's office today as to We checked with Senator Johnson's office today as to the six hundred dollar federal add-on, I'll call it, on whether we, as a governmental agency, will have to pay a portion of that, and there's still no clear answer to that one either.
Kurt, you may know that we have a closed session, potentially to talk on the transportation contract tonight, just so you know.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments on this topic? Okay, Patrick?
Okay. My final discussion item of the evening is the building project update. Mr. Clark presented an update with the construction happening during this time of virtual learning. Findorf is proceeding with construction and has been able to push up the timeline on some of the work, which could result in a cost savings for the district. Is there any discussion on that, that item?
I don't see anyone. Yeah, Amanda?
So they've been able to continue working. I got a notification from Butler's principal today just stating that though they've been able to continue getting work done with no one in the building, that it didn't necessarily mean our timeline was going to be sped up to being finished because we don't know if the students will go back to school yet this year. Is, was that part the update? Forgive me, I skimmed that piece because I had got the other part from the principal.
Right. Okay, Darren, I'm sorry.
Update itself is what Findorf puts out on where they are in terms of progress. We are having conversations about, and we have already sped up some of the work.
Kind of figured, yeah.
Yeah, and if we got the word, and I'm not saying this is the reason we shouldn't have school again this school year, but if that does become the case, I'm planning in May to have Findorf come in and show us what that construction schedule will look like, and it will be substantially different at all the schools. Much quicker and would, in theory, save us significant dollars. The biggest hurdle after you get beyond, are we having school yet this year, is what's the impact to the supply chain in terms of new equipment, new lighting? We don't want to get too far out over our skis and then can't complete the work we need to ensure that school's ready for next school year or whenever, whenever we return.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else on this topic? Okay, Patrick?
I do have one item that we will be talking about in closed sessions. So, Mr. President, this concludes my report. Our next meeting will be May eleventh, five thirty in the boardroom, hopefully.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to teaching and learning, given by Mr. Dietz.
Thank you, Mr. President. The last teaching and learning committee meeting was held last night, April fourteenth, two thousand twenty, at six P M. Through a virtual session, there are three discussion information items that appear on the agenda for teaching and learning this evening. The first discussion information item, elementary phonics word study. Phonics word study is up for review as part of our curricular design process. Melissa Yao, Director of Elementary Learning, and Emily Freeman, an instructional coach in the district, shared information on the need for change and the pilot process that we are currently taking. The recommendation. All right. It just, my screen went out. The recommended resource will be presented as an action item for approval at the May fifth meeting. And this is a discussion information.
Want to have a comment or a question on phonics? Presentations were great. It's been a series of presentations, Greg, that Melissa and the team have given, and appreciate the progression, and then breaking it up into sections so we can absorb it over a period of time.
And they really showed us that there was a need for phonics instruction at all levels, kindergarten through fifth grade, that would be included in this new program, and excited to, you know, see that for approval in May.
Any other questions or comments on phonics? Okay, Greg?
Second discussion information item, K-12 social studies curricular update. The school district, Waukesha, has spent the last eighteen months engaging in a deeper understanding around the two thousand eighteen Wisconsin social studies standards. Dee Garcia, our Director of Multilingual and Global Education, gave the board an update on our work teams that are in progress. This winter, a multidisciplinary group has spent some time looking at the continuum of learning standards, differentiating social studies tasks and assignments aligned to the standards, and refining a vision for learning. We'll continue to hear updates from Dee as she moves to move forward.
Comment or questions? Okay, Greg?
Last discussion information, discussion information item was the transition to virtual learning. Jody Landish, our Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning, provided an update for the committee members about the planning and implementation of moving forward for learning through the virtual environment in the school district, Waukesha, over the past month. And that kind of echoes some of the information that Dr. Cook shared with us earlier. This was the area of special education. Jody shared a lot of what was happening, K-12, in our schools for other populations of students.
Any other questions or comments by my fellow board members? Kurt?
Yeah, I just wanted to go, comment on the virtual learning, and also because of some comments that was made tonight from the public. The reality is, our educators and our administrators are probably putting in twenty, twenty-five percent more time for the virtual learning adjustment than what they would be doing in their normal classroom environment. And it's all about, it's a big change for them and for the students as well. So it's not often where you take a workforce and you ask them to put in twenty-five percent more work and not pay them anything more. And I understand lots of people are not getting paid like, right now, and that's a terrible thing to be going through for our taxpayers and our community. But we are certainly getting excellent value out of our educational staff. And I also want to thank the fact that the community has always supported our technology platform. And Waukesha is blessed that we had such a great technology platform that we could launch our virtual learning from. So there's very few school districts across the state that has what Waukesha has in terms of a virtual learning platform. And having E-Achieved too, as part of our program, helps us do that. So we just were very lucky to be in the situation we were, considering the circumstances. And another thing this teaches everyone is you have to adapt to change. And this was a change, and we'll be adapting to change on a number of fronts for probably at least another twelve to eighteen months. So I want to thank the staff and the administration for what they've been able to accomplish in a, like, an instantaneous moment, and, and all the hard work they're putting in.
Thank you, Kurt.
Also, a big shout out to Steve Shloman and of his crew for everything that they've done behind the scenes to seem, you know, just to really keep us moving forward and ahead of the game, and probably much better shape than any other school district around us. So thank you to Steve Shloman and all of his team, and the entire staff that are working in this virtual environment.
Joe, I had a comment if I may.
Go ahead, Corey, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Como. Yeah, I want to echo Mr. Dietz and Mr., geez, I'm blanking. Excuse me, Kurt, Mr. O'Brien. Their comments as well. My wife's an elementary school teacher in West Milwaukee, West Alice. So she's virtually teaching her students. So I can guarantee you, she's not simply sitting on the couch and working for fifteen minutes per day. So, and she lets me know it. And I also have two students in the district, like some of us do, and they are working hard. They are not simply checking a box online to show that they're there and not doing the work. They're interacting with myself because I'm mostly working from home, but more my wife because she's a teacher. I've heard lots of comments, lots of emails, lots of phone calls from parents in the districts, or in the district, and other people who live in the district. I've not heard many complaints. What I've heard is a lot of questions about when the school district may open, but mostly regarding the virtual learning, they're pretty impressed. The one issue I had come up, and it's not a complaint, is that some of the students were saying, look, we've got different teachers, obviously, for different subjects. They're each using, at least some of them, different platforms, or some of the students, it's a little difficult to remember where you go for each class, what your login is, and the kind of the logistics of it. I know that issue was brought up to Butler's principal, Mr. Sadowski. He sent out an email yesterday, I believe, and indicated that he quickly problem solved that, and he's sending, I think, a weekly to-do or like a look ahead list to students. So I think that's going to be tremendously helpful. If you look at this, you know, history's going to judge the district and the board as to what we have done over the last month or two and what we'll do over the next number of months. This could have been an absolute disaster, and it's not been perfect. But overall, I think it's, it's gone extremely well. So big kudos to the district. They literally, and the administration, they jumped into something that no one, I don't think any of us predicted. So things have gone as smoothly as I could possibly hope. We can always do better, but I'm extremely pleased. So good work.
Thank you, Mr. Montiel. Anybody else? Ms. Reinacek?
Thank you. I too wanted to echo what my fellow board members are praising, and just wanted to pass on something that I had heard from a parent in our district. She was on a, on a, a meeting call, kind of like this, but with other people, with other moms, and just kind of commenting on that her kids were at home doing their work, and they were from other districts. And this was about a week ago, and both of them had said that they hadn't even had school yet, and there was nothing even being in the works. So I'm sure people have gotten up and running by now, hopefully, but just wanted to say that we were ahead of the game, and because of the great efforts of everyone from Steve, and then it trickles down to all the other technology people, then training the teachers, and then the teachers delivering that. And, oh, it doesn't start with Steve, it started with Todd. So I just wanted to say that it's being noticed, and I was told to pass that on to our team. So just wanted to say that in front of everyone that it's, it's a unique situation that we have here, and we are very blessed to have the people that we do in place.
And thank you, Mrs. Reinacek. And to add on to that just a little bit, there are some school districts nationwide that just haven't held a day of school during this time. I don't know what that count is. Todd, you might have a better feel for that, but they've been.
I know there are some, but I have no idea how many. I mean, it, you know, in this state, I think we're pretty good. I don't know about other states, so.
Thank you, Todd. Mrs. Voight?
I also want to comment on the fact that the teachers are definitely putting in more than the fifteen minutes a day kind of perspective on things. My daughter is preparing her students to take the AP Physics exam, which has totally switched from being a multiple choice to a short answer, kind of a short response type of process. Very different expectations, a very different approach to it. But still, they need to be ready mid-May to be able to do that. So she's been, you know, working very hard to make that preparation and, you know, make that preparation possible for the kids. And I really feel that they're going to be in a good place because of the fact that she does put in more than the minimum amount of time that some people might think is happening.
Yeah, that's a, that's a big change for AP exams. This is the first time they've ever been administered online, I believe. Is that correct, Todd?
Correct.
Yeah. And did you have anything else?
Just, I, as a shout out to everybody, you know, I think because of our background with E-Achieved, we really were in a much better place than most, most schools in the state of Wisconsin. And as I was looking at the expectations of Wisconsin Act eighty-five that passed the legislature this, you know, just in the last two days, they want to have recommendations for best practices for transitioning to and providing virtual instruction when schools are closed. And I think the school district, Waukesha, would be a good place to give those best practices.
Excellent. Does anybody else want to comment or have a question? Yes, Amanda?
Yes, thank you. I too would like to just thank the administration. The tech team, you guys shining bright. You took your moment and you ran with it, so thank you so much for that. With regards to our BI Ed classes, our teachers, and our specials teachers that might have been brought up earlier, they too are working. My children are still doing BI Ed classes, still doing music, still doing art classes. So all of those teachers are engaged as well with our students virtually, and they're doing a great job on that. Dr. Cook, thank you for updating us on the special ed, because I did have some of our district members reach out to me and asking me what was going on with the families that had those needs. So now I have a list of things that I can update them with. Otherwise, I will send them over to you, as I usually do. But I'm, to everybody, thank you very much. As a board member, I can say what we're doing. As a parent, I can testify to what the teachers are doing. So thank you, everyone.
Anyone else have a question or comment? Okay, Greg?
Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes the teaching and learning committee report for this evening. Our next meeting will be held on Tuesday, May fifth, two thousand twenty.
Thank you. Moving on to safety and security, given by Mrs. Reinacek.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do not have an update at this time. There are some things that are not quite completed due to what is happening because they do have to do with the pandemic and procedures and such. So those will be finished up shortly, and we'll be meeting soon. I believe it'll be next month, so have to postpone it one more time, but hoping that by being in our homes where the children are the safest at this time, that is a, that's a good report. And looking forward to a safety and security meeting soon. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to human resources, given by Mr. O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. Como. We didn't have any action items for tonight. We do have some discussion information items on the update from the superintendent's search committee. I know there are a couple of the, from our consultant that's doing the search, they're also online at a nice meeting. As far as the ad hoc committee, superintendent's vacancy, we met virtually to get the search process started. We have concise paid ads repulsed with Wisconsin Leadership Center, which is a statewide posting, and the American Association of School Administrators, which is a national posting. We have also prepared longer descriptive ads, including highlights of our school district, reposted on Waukesha School District website and School Exec Connect website. From the concise ad, the Waukesha School Board seeks an outstanding superintendent to provide long-term systemic and inspirational leadership that results in continuous improvement of the district, each of its twenty-seven schools, and all of its twelve thousand, four hundred and two students in grades K four through twelve. Bullet points from the longer website ads, we want someone with proven leadership experience and mobilizing continuous growth in student achievement, an effective communicator with the school board, all staff, students, and community, the capacity to address challenges with innovative ideas and passion, and foresight to guide a financially sound pathway for the future. Also, an influential collaborator on legislative issues that impact close schools. There has been an online survey that was just posted on the Waukesha School District website that solicits responses from all district stakeholders through May two thousand twenty. As of this morning, we've had three hundred and thirty-one responses, that was as of yesterday morning, have been received. Virtual focus groups to also guide recruiting and selection of new superintendent are currently being scheduled to occur during the next two weeks. In the meantime, we'll have individual phone visits on these topics scheduled with each of the board members. And each of you, each of you have scheduled a time, and Dr. Gibson, um, our search consultants on Thursday and Friday of this week. Results from the online survey and these focus groups will be summarized into Waukesha School District new superintendent profile that will be presented at the May 13, 2020 school board meeting. As of this morning, five candidates have already applied for the district. That was yesterday morning. They probably had a few more since then. Um, we would have expected to be a lot more than that, but we've only been up a couple of days. So, uh, um, it's, it's looking positive, and, uh, that's the response I've gotten back from, uh, the search committee. I'm not sure if, uh, either the two, I think we just had Gerald and Kelly on from, uh, the search firm, School Exec. I'm not sure if they had any comments they wanted to add, but they're certainly welcome this time.
Don't see them on. Sue, do you?
Kelly and Gerald both just unmuted their microphones. Or Sue unmuted them. There's Kelly.
Hi. This is Kelly Thompson.
Okay, thank you, Kelly. Go ahead.
Oh, hi. Um, I don't really have any, um, update to provide to, uh, the board other than what was provided from, uh, the firm as, you know, a whole. So, um, but I am able to provide any feedback to, um, both Jerry and to Matt, if there's anything from the board, uh, that you would like me to forward to them.
This is Jerry Freyday. Um, the, the one thing I would add to the report is that, uh, uh, an individual from our firm will be translating the survey into Spanish so that you can put a Spanish version of it on your website, therefore, uh, meeting the needs of some of your constituents.
Jerry, do you know when that will be?
Um, I think they're going to begin working on it, uh, tomorrow. Matt contacted, uh, the president of SEC, and one of the partners, uh, is, is fluent in Spanish. And so he's going to, uh, be working on it. I would anticipate that, uh, and I don't know how long it takes to translate, because I'm not a translator. But I would anticipate that he could have that done before the end of the week.
Okay, thank you.
The other thing that I would mention about the survey is you tend to, in the first seven days, get a significant number of responses. Then towards the end, we probably should send out another message to the community. And generally, that last week, you get people who, for whatever reason, didn't pay attention the first time. And that might be something, uh, to consider, uh, again. Um, that would be something you'd have to decide to do.
Kurt, you could, uh, you, you and Sharon, I think Sharon sent out the original link to the survey. Is that correct, Kurt?
Yes, Sharon sent out the original link, and, uh, you, I think we're moving pretty quickly. Um, I'll be able to do, uh, kind of circle back with the, with School Exec probably next Monday or Tuesday, um, to see whether we want to get together again as an ad hoc search committee. Um, by that time, he'll have all their one-to-one with board members, which is what we've encouraged was, we encourage each board member to speak freely, and we felt maybe one-to-one was better than one-to-three. Uh, that way you could freely give your input and not be uncomfortable of, you know, not being free to communicate your, your ideas as to what you want to see in a superintendent. So I appreciate every board member taking the time and also the School Exec to take the time to meet one-on-one, uh, with each individual board member.
Does anyone else from School Exec have any comments, uh, that they would like to add at this time? Okay, thank you. We appreciate that, Kurt.
So with that.
This is a discussion item for others.
Yeah, if there's any, yeah, we can open it up for discussion if anyone has any other questions or comments.
Mr. Montiel?
Thank you, Mr. President. I saw Sharon, uh, email that went out. It looked great. I didn't click on the survey. I guess my question is for the survey that goes to our employees, uh, is that, are their responses anonymous?
Uh, yes, they are anonymous. Uh, if you look at the survey, it does ask them to, you know, answer some questions to kind of define, you know, gender categories of where they are. Um, but it's an anonymous survey. Um, and the, the questions, if you go, if you go back to look at the questions, it's questions that was reviewed with the committee. Um, and we added and subtracted stuff. Um, you don't want it to be too long, and you don't want it to end up being meaningless. And I think it came up with a very nice, concise questionnaire that that should provide some information to the search firm as far as what our community is looking for.
Good.
Thank you. And, and I'd encourage each board member to look at that survey before they're in their one-to-one with, uh, School Exec, just to have an idea for the types of questions that are being asked.
Yeah, I had, uh, I had a chance to take it today. It's, it's nine questions. Um, I, I thought it was, uh, oh, written very well. And I think we'll get some very good information out of this, and this did go to every stakeholder in the district. Um, a few days ago when Sharon had passed this out, correct, uh, Kurt?
I believe so, yeah, yeah.
Or not passed it out, but emailed it out, sorry. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
I have one.
Go ahead, Diane.
Just wondering if, um, there's another survey that goes out to the community and, and how the community part of the surveying will happen.
Do you want me to answer that, Joe?
Sure, Sharon. That would be great.
So this one was sent out to the everybody list, as you all saw. It's placed on the website for community participation. And then I'm waiting, um, for translation, and then I can email it out, and that will be how it gets out to our families. But right now for community, it'll be on our website. It'll be on, and probably already is on Facebook and on Twitter.
Thank you, Sharon. Any other questions, Mr. Montiel?
Sorry, thank you. I saw in sharing your email, um, I read it. Maybe I missed it, but could you possibly put something in there that says the responses are anonymous? It may increase the response rate. I don't, just a thought.
When we send out the reminder, I can add that right into the body of the email. It does say that on the landing page of the survey, but you're right, if they don't even get that far to click the link. So I can just put it, um, in the next part of the reminder email that I send out to everybody.
Thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions or comments?
Uh, that concludes my report, Mr.
Thank you. Move on to, uh, our Policy Committee, given by Mr. Baumgart.
Um, Mr. Como, Mr. Baumgart is having some issues with his internet, so Mr. McCaffrey is going to read.
Okay, sounds good. Take it away, Pat.
You got it. Thank God it came in today. The, uh, Policy Committee met on April 7th, and they have seven action items on the agenda this evening and no information or discussion items. The first action item is revisions to policy 0167.1 voting. This policy, policy provides that a board member's presence includes participation by telephone or other manner of remote access. This is a, this is consistent with the longstanding opinion of the Wisconsin Attorney General that telephone meetings constitute the convening of a governmental body, and more recently, guidance that clarifies that video conferencing is also a form of convening a meeting. I move for approval of this policy as presented.
A second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Montiel? Discussion? Questions?
Yes, just a question, Mr. Como. So is this only applicable in extreme situations? Or is it next week, next month, when we could possibly all be back together? And I'm off on a business trip. I can call in. Is that? When is this applicable?
Do you want to take that?
Certainly. It's applicable anytime, um, that the, that the board would essentially want to use it. We would, as a board, as far as convening a whole board meeting virtually, you would want to take advantage of that. Um, that, uh, option, uh, only in extreme circumstances.
Okay, thank you.
For a single board member, they could call in, but for, uh, the whole board, we would want to reconvene, you know, face to face again, and then allow a person to call in.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, Sue, will you please take the, uh, poll vote on voting?
Karen Reinacek? Karen Reinacek? Hi. Amanda Roddy?
Hi.
Diane Voight?
Hi.
Corey Montiel?
Hi.
Kurt O'Brien?
Hi.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Hi.
Greg Dietz?
Hi.
And Joseph Como?
Hi.
So it's eight.
Eight zero, yep. We're missing you, Bill.
All right, our second action item this evening is the new policy 8420.01 Epidemics and Pandemics. This new policy includes topics of consideration as school officials determine how to prepare for and handle epidemics and pandemics, health situations. As has been the case with previous such incidents, the current guidance related to COVID-19 virus is continuing to develop and requires vigilance in keeping apprised of health officials' guidance as it affects school district staff and students. To have this new policy in effect immediately, we are asking that the requirement of two full board readings be waived per Board Policy 0131.1 Bylaws and Policies. At this time, I move for a waiver of the two reading requirements for the new policy 8420.01 Epidemics and Pandemics.
Is there a second to that motion?
I second it.
Second by Mrs. Voight? Discussion on waiving, waiving this, uh, from two readings to one reading. Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Kurt O'Brien?
Hi.
Amanda Roddy?
Hi.
Karen Reinacek? Hi. Greg Dietz?
Hi.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Hi.
Diane Voight?
Hi.
Corey Montiel?
Hi.
Joseph Como?
Hi. This is eight zero on the waiver. Uh, Pat, now the, now the policy itself?
Thank you. I move for approval of this new policy as presented.
Is there a second to that? Thing by Mrs. Reinacek? Any discussion? Okay, seeing none. Uh, Sue, will you please take the roll call vote on 84.01 Epidemics and Pandemics?
Diane Voight?
Hi.
Corey Montiel?
Hi.
Greg Dietz?
Hi.
Patrick McCaffrey? Karen Reinacek? Amanda Roddy?
Hi.
Kurt O'Brien?
Hi.
Joseph Como?
I passes eight zero, Sue.
All righty. Uh, the third action item is new policy, Families First Compliance Policy. The federal government has passed the Families First Coronavirus Response Act to assist employees during the current public health emergency. As a covered employer, the district provides the temporary benefits required by the act as summarized in this policy. This policy is subject to change, including, but not limited to, in response to any new or revised guidance or regulations issued by the federal agencies. The leave described in this policy expires on December 31st, 2020. To have this new policy in effect immediately, we are asking that the requirement of two full board readings be waived per Board Policy 0131.1 Bylaws and Policies. At this time, I move for a waiver of the two reading requirement for new policy, Families First Compliance Policy.
Is there a second to that? Second by Mrs. Voight? Discussion on waiving, the readings down to one? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote on the waiver.
Corey Montiel?
Hi.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Hi.
Karen Reinacek? Kurt O'Brien?
Hi.
Amanda Roddy?
Hi.
Greg Dietz?
Hi.
Diane Voight?
Hi.
Joseph Como?
Hi. This is eight zero, so we only need one reading. Pat?
I move for approval of this new policy as presented.
Is there a second to that?
I second it.
Thing by Mrs. Voight, discussion on this new policy? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote on the Families First Compliance Policy.
Greg Dietz?
Hi.
Karen Reinacek? Corey Montiel?
Hi.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Hi.
Diane Voight?
Hi.
Kurt O'Brien?
Hi.
Amanda Roddy?
Hi.
Joseph Como?
Hi. This is eight zero.
Joe, I'm so. Okay.
Yep.
Corey.
Oh, Corey, I'm sorry.
I'm so sorry to interrupt. I raised my hand, but it's the difficulties of this meeting. I just wanted to state on this particular policy, I do support it, but there was quite a bit of discussion at, um, the Policy Committee meeting about this and why it happened and what we looked into as alternatives and how, uh, I guess my thoughts on this evolved over the last month or so. So I don't want to repeat all that here. If someone is interested in learning that and hearing more detailed analysis and discussion, it was at our policy meeting. So you can just go on YouTube and, and see it there.
Thank, thank you for that, Corey.
Yes, sir.
All righty. Our fourth, our fourth action item is revisions to policy 2210 Curriculum Development. The policy language is modified to incorporate requirements found in state law regarding the contents of the district curriculum. I move for approval of this policy as presented.
Is there a second? Thing by Mrs. Reinacek? Any discussion? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote on Policy 2210 Curriculum Development.
Kurt O'Brien?
Hi.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Hi.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Hi.
Greg Dietz?
Hi.
Amanda Roddy?
Hi.
Diane Voight?
Hi.
Corey Montiel?
Hi.
Karen Reinacek? Hi. Joseph Como?
Hi. This is eight zero, Sue.
All righty. Our fifth action item this evening is revisions to policy 2261 Title I Services. This policy is revised to implement guidance on Title I service delivery, including supplement, not supplant, guidance. I move for approval of this policy as presented.
Is there a second to that motion?
I second it.
My Mrs. Voight, discussion? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote on, let's see, 2261 Title I Services.
Amanda Roddy?
Hi.
Diane Voight?
Hi.
Corey Montiel?
Hi.
Karen Reinacek? Hi. Greg Dietz?
Hi.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Hi.
Kurt O'Brien?
Hi.
Joseph Como?
Hi. This is eight zero, Sue.
Okay, our sixth action item this evening is revisions to policy 2261.01 Parent and Family Member Participation in Title I Programs. This replacement policy is provided to implement the parent and family engagement requirement incorporated into Title I Regulations and Guidance. Included in your packet is the current Waukesha policy that is being replaced. I move for approval of this policy as presented.
Is there a second to that?
I second it.
Sorry, Dan.
I actually heard Corey first.
Yeah. Let Corey have it.
That's why he's a politician.
Give that one to Corey. Discussion. Well, so this is a complete replacement. Joe, would you comment on why?
Um, the why behind it, uh, the federal government changed their requirements under family participation, uh, in Title I Programs. Uh, we brought this, uh, recommended policy revision, uh, to our Title I folks in the district. Uh, they took a look at it, and based off of what we had on the books and what was recommended from the federal government, they re, reviewed it, made sure that it fit what we were doing in Waukesha, um, and then gave it its blessing to bring to the committee.
Appreciate it. Some. Appreciate that, Joe. Appreciate that Joe. I thought I had another comment written down here, a question, but I didn't, so. Any other discussion on this? Okay Sue, please take the roll call vote on the revisions to policy 2261.01, Parent and Family Membership Participation in Title I Programs.
Karen Reinacek?
Hi.
Amanda Roddy?
Hi.
Diane Voight?
Hi.
Corey Montiel?
Hi.
Kurt O'Brien?
Hi.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Hi.
Greg Dietz?
Hi.
Joseph Como?
Hi, this is eight zero Sue?
Alrighty, our last action item for this evening is revisions to policy 2700.01. School Performance and Accountability Reports. The policy is revised to remove Title I detail from this policy. And cross-reference the Title I specific policy, which details the Title I Performance Analysis Requirements. Required by the Every Student Succeeds Act. I move for approval of this policy as presented.
Is there a second to this?
Sue showed up.
I know, I saw you on there.
Second this one?
I'll second it.
Alright Phil, welcome back.
Wait, I tell you what, we need that Steve Schloben guy. He's been on with me for 20 minutes and we got it fixed.
Right.
Alright.
Any further discussion on this? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote on revisions to policy 2700.01, School Performance and Accountability Reports.
Diane Voight?
Hi.
Corey Montiel?
Hi.
William Baumgart?
Hi.
Greg Dietz?
Hi.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Hi.
Karen Reinacek?
Hi.
Amanda Roddy?
Hi.
Kurt O'Brien?
Hi.
Joseph Como?
Hi, this is nine zero Sue?
There are no information or discussion items on the agenda this evening. The next policy committee meeting is scheduled for April 21st, 2020 at 4:00 PM. That completes the policy committee report. No problem.
Welcome back too Bill, glad we got it figured out. Moving on to our.
I don't.
We'll have some glitches here and there. Moving on to our technology committee given by Mrs. Voight.
We have not met, met Mr. President, so I don't have a report, but I want to say that I appreciate all the feedback about the online learning, which is definitely under the technology umbrella.
Absolutely, thank you. Okay, that's, we're going to move on to our other business. As always, we ask if there are any recommendations? Or to be adjourned for board of education meetings? Does anyone have? Any recommendations or recommendations to our committee chairs on topics that we might want to take up in committee? Okay, seeing none. We do have a need for closed session tonight for item C and item D. So I would be looking for a motion for both of those at this time.
Want me to read them?
Sure Bill.
Okay. By the way, I'll ask this question. Do we, can we make one motion for all of them when I read them?
Yes.
Okay. First one, I would move to adjourn to executive session in pursuit of Wisconsin statutes 19.85. Parenthesis 1, parentheses E, for deliberating and negotiating the purchasing of public property, properties, plural. Investing of public funds or conducting other specified public business whenever. Competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. In parentheses, the states less fall parking solution, lease of district property and district transportation bus contract. Item D. Determining to executive session for Wisconsin statute 19.85, parentheses 1, parentheses C. To consider employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the government body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. To seize retraction of retirement requests. That's two I move for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. McCaffrey? Will you please take the roll call vote Sue?
Baumgart?
Yes, hi.
Kurt O'Brien?
Hi.
Amanda Roddy?
Hi.
Karen Reinacek? Greg Dietz?
Hi.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Hi.
Diane Voight?
Hi.
Corey Montiel?
Hi.
Joseph Como?
Hi, passes nine zero Sue. We will go into closed session. Immediately after this and we will have the potential to reconvene into open session. So for the people in our public audience. Boy, I don't, I don't know how much time closed session will be, but we do have a number of items. I don't know, I bet you it could be 30 to 60 minutes. It could even go beyond that. It's. It's tough to say, but it's not going to be like five minutes is, is what my gut's saying. So just to our public, to, to the public in general. We will come back and reconvene into open session after our closed session. And so right now, to my fellow board members, we will close out of this WebEx session. We have another link to go into closed session and we'll take it from there. Meet you on the other side.
I don't have to close. Don't have to say.
Left, leave the event.
Leave the event, yep.
Sue, why don't you let us know if you believe everyone is here?
I'm checking. We're missing.
Patrick.
Patrick. And Kurt.
What you might want to do if you can is resend them an invite to this meeting. I know that that happened to me yesterday. But I couldn't find mine. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We might have to text them too if there's any. I just, I just. Patrick, letting him know. Here in a moment.
Working on an issue with this technology right now.
I just, I just text Kurt letting him.
It's done now. It's on. Kurt's on.
Okay, good. Alright, everybody's here.
Yep.
Excellent. So we have reconvened into our open session. We do have need for one action item, that would be item C. Kurt, would you like to make that motion? Or anybody could actually, it doesn't matter. Your, your mic's not on Kurt.
Needs a mic.
There you go.
I move, we accept the, the H&R Committee's motion to rescind the retirement of Mr. Paul Moran based on the pandemic conditions.
Second. Second.
I heard a bunch, but I, I heard Patrick McCaffrey first.
He's come out of district offices.
Any discussion? Okay Sue, will you please take the roll call vote?
Corey Montiel? William Baumgart?
Hi.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Hi.
Diane Reinacek? Kurt O'Brien?
Hi.
Amanda Roddy?
Hi.
Greg Dietz?
Hi.
Diane Voight?
Hi.
Joseph Como?
Hi, this is nine zero Sue. That is the conclusion of the business that we have tonight. I truly appreciate. The audience for sticking with us. I think we are a couple of people that stuck with us. One attendee?
Not right now.
Appreciate, appreciate that. And thank you everybody for completing our first virtual full board of education meeting. Thought it went okay and I think our committee meetings have gone well too. So thank you everybody and I hope everyone has a good evening.
And thank you Sue for being a perfect toast. You're welcome. But thank you to Sam and Stacy for helping out.
I'll thank them, I'll thank them myself personally.
Thanks Patrick. Good night everybody.
Good night everybody.
I like the virtual cookies.
I thought we were going to get some real ones.
I should have brought.
You should have, one for me.
Next time.
Okay.
Good night everybody.
Good night. Didn't do it. Go back to that one.